Do I just put that all in the middle of there? And motion carried at the end, or?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, I would, I would say that after she moved to amend the motion to include additional corrections, motion died for lack of second. Then, whether you want to say the original motion carried, or the first mo- the motion carried.
Well, I think we corrected, though.
Well, I, I did, I did state that the regular meeting has corrected. And then after she, after I did that, she moved to amend to include additional corrections, which we did not make.
That is correct.
I thought we did make the next correction of the nursing, or the senior senator moved from stopped or charged to accused.
Oh, right, because I asked for two corrections and one was made. And then two. That's right.
At the beginning of the mo- the-
You're right.
-first one list of flu and then the courthouse security, then she moved to amend it to include the second, which was the stopped to charged. That was approved.
One of my three corrections was-
Two.
-taken into consideration. Three.
Two of them.
No, I wanted-
I corrected during spelling.
Yeah, one of those spelling corrections.
I remembered through last time. I had that F and the L turned around.
Okay, there was also open records?
Yeah. Okay, I got moved as corrected, second by Terry Finch, and then a period, Alexis Flue moved to amend the motion to include an additional correction, and then I'm striking a second there and adding motion died for lack of second. Is that what you're asking, telling me to do?
Well, yeah, I guess, because your motion died. We didn't second it, but we did add your correction, I guess.
I don't think I motioned for corrections after, I don't think it was a motion. I believe-
Well, if it wasn't, then we need you to strike all that.
I was looking up, and technically, once you guys have approved amendments, really all I have to put is that you approved amendments and don't even have to put who moved in and seconded. When I looked up Robert's Rules of Orders for dummies, but I always do it this way.
Then just take all that out.
Okay. So we're just gonna have the normal move and seconded and as corrected.
As corrected, because it was one of several corrections that were corrected.
Okay. So I've got Alja Wells moved to approve amendment of the November 20th, 2017 regular meeting as corrected, second by Terry Finch, motion carried, but then this follows. And then the vote.
It's fine with me.
I'm also wondering if some of these executive sessions need a statement at the end, no action taken, because then, when there is an action, then we, you put it in as a, an announcement, or I think maybe we just need to add no action taken at the end of those separate sessions.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah, just at the very end?
Yes.
When we come back in, yeah, when we come back in. With no action taken.
How about, yeah, how about the chairman reconvene, uh, the meeting with no action taken? I think I had it up, I think I was putting it up above. Is that what you mean?
However, I just would appreciate it being in there. That way, it just, it shows in which session we finally came to a conclusion of some sort of action, but-
So at the reconvenes on each of them, I'm adding at the end with no action taken after the time of the reconvene?
I think that's fine.
And I'll try to remember that, to do that on that one.
So I, I, that's after every executive session?
The first two?
Well, I think maybe you should do the, I guess, the question is, is whether we do not take any action during executive session, so if there is action taken, it will be announced. We will have to do that in open session, right?
Right, correct.
So, so I think after every time we come back in, you just need to see, say the reconvene the meeting with no action.
Okay, I've got it.
So, it's clear that no action was taken during the executive sessions.
Uh huh. And my only other, just for clarification, under motions, at the very end, second to last paragraph, when it says that I move to amend the motion to add, I think you need quotations, because where, you were adding the words quote unquote, and that way it doesn't-
Okay.
It, it reads a little more clearly that you're putting those words into that emo- into that motion that passed.
So I'm adding parentheses before your name, where you, Alexis moved to end, and then at the end, after seconded by Terry Finch?
No, it'll say Alexis Flue moved to amend motion to add, quote.
Oh, oh.
Like to add those words specifically.
Sorry, got it.
Uh huh. And then it-
Sorry, I was thinking parentheses.
Maybe I said the wrong thing, maybe I said the wrong thing, I'm sorry.
No, I think you did. Okay. Was that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Anything else?
I would move to approve the minutes of the November 27th meeting.
I'll second.
Been moved.
As corrected.
As corrected, yes.
Seconded to approve minutes as corrected. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Jennifer is here. I think we can move on ahead unless we have some-
We didn't do the, I'd move to approve the minutes of the November 30th meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about those. I would second the 30th, the minutes of the, do we have any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Abstained.
Okay, I will, we did receive a correspondence from North Central Regional Planning Commission. This letter is to inform you that the North Central Regional Planning Commission has a program that's available to your cities to help with housing rehabilitation. The Community Development Block grant housing rehabilitation program is one alternative that has helped several communities in the region to address housing needs. The program designed to benefit low and moderate income families, make funds available to local units of government for homeowner and rental rehabilitation and demolition of dilapidated residential structures. And then it just tells us, there is a flyer here, it will be posted in the courthouse. I think Sylvan Grove got one of those grants a year ago, or the count, maybe through economic development. We have been using that, but we will post that. Okay, Jennifer, do you, we need an executive session?
Well, first, I do have a First Amendment to the Lincoln Park Manor lease that Mr. Krangle has submitted.
Okay.
I don't believe that needs to be, but I did want to bring that up, so-
Okay.
-all of you would have an opportunity to review it and see if that was-
Okay.
-consistent with the agreement.
You've reviewed it?
I guess you probably don't need my, but just so.
You have reviewed this?
I've reviewed it, I, I believe that it's consistent, but I just wanted to, to make sure that that was what you were wanting. Mr. Krangle may pop up here, too.
Do you want to just read it aloud, then we don't have to pass it along?
It's pretty short, if you didn't want to read it.
Yeah, I, I will read, I just wanted to read this before I, excuse me, I'm having a little trouble this morning. First Amendment to the lease agreement, Lincoln County, Kansas, and Lincoln Park Manor Incorporated agree on this First Amendment to the lease agreement dated May 22nd, 2017. Schedule of payments in Section 3 of the lease is modified as, as of the date below to show monthly rent of $3,400 if the census is 36 or fewer residents, $3,900 if the census is 37 to 42 residents, and $4,400 if the census is 43 or more residents. Although the sections and provisions of the lease agreement dated May 22nd, 2017 are affirmed and unchanged, executed on December 4th by Hazling County Political Subdivision of State of Kansas by county commissioners, listed three commissioners and attested by the county clerk and the county attorney.
I believe that Mr. Grace has already approved that, speaking to his counsel.
So is, is that to initiate for December rent? Because today's the 4th and it's due by the 10th, I believe, so is that for December or starting the beginning of the year?
I'm, I can figure, find that out. I guess if we are okay with the language, then I can figure out a starting date before we leave the meeting today.
Or is this retroactive from the offer of the agreement?
I was gonna do it from here forward.
From here, from here forward, for the month of December?
From December.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a couple other items.
Yes, okay, I will.
I move to approve the amendment to the lease agreement.
You'll have a second?
I'll have a second.
Been moved and second to approve amendment to the lease agreement. Any questions? If not, oh.
I guess I would just like to state, thank you. I feel like it's a, a good gesture and an honor, and an honorable, good faith movement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I think, I think we need to add in Lincoln Park Manor.
Uh, yes. Thank you.
So you want to read the motion, Don?
Um, you move to approve the amendment to the lease agreement with Lincoln Park Manor.
Please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same side. Motion is carried. Are we just gonna have one copy of this, Jennifer?
Um, I could do that.
Just make copies of it?
Yeah.
All right, okay. Don will need to keep a copy, I'm sure.
Right. If I may?
Do you want me to entertain Mr. Grace?
That's fine, I've got time this morning, so whatever's convenient.
All right. Sorry about that. John?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
We will entertain you.
Thank you.
Maybe.
Mark, you want to come up?
Yep, sure.
Yeah, pull up the table.
So, just a, a couple things while I'm here. We have some equipment needs, okay? The, there are three. One is beds. We're needing some new beds, and I have a quote here. The second is the scrubber that, that the county owns.
Floor scrubber?
Yeah, the floor scrubber, that's worn out. And the third thing has to do with the doors. So, the doors, the federal government has changed the regulations this fall. So we had the fire marshal come out, and he looked at the doors. And we have six doors that separate the hallways. So those doors are required to have on them a fire protection label. They do not. Some of our doors do, those don't. So those doors basically have to be replaced, and this is what the fire marshals told us. So that, that's one thing, we don't have a quote on that yet, but I don't know what that's gonna run. That could run $15,000, I don't know.
Corridor doors?
Yeah, the, the big swinging doors that close the fire.
Six sets of them, or three sets?
Six, yeah, three sets.
Three sets.
Yeah, six doors.
That subject has come up through the years-
Okay.
-before.
Yeah.
They're not tagged, and they won't, nobody will be willing to tag it, too.
Yeah, you can't go out and spy a tag, and this-
It'll be the original tag.
Here are the beds on the beds, and the scrubber. So, my understanding was that you already bought, I think, 10 or 11 beds a couple of years ago, and the beds that we have, just so you know, are 14 years old. And some of the beds do not have wheels on them. We can't move the bed. Some of the beds do not, if they have a motor, then the motor can't be replaced. And a lot of the beds we got were from the hospital years ago. So, I don't know how big a bite, you want to bite on this, but my feeling would be if we could get a dozen beds, and that would be about $25,000. That would get us, because we only have, I think, three new ones, everything else is old. And then maybe next year, we could see how we're doing, and if we could get new beds next year, too. But really, this has to do with the health and safety of the residents, the bed. Now, we do buy the mattress, so you don't buy that. But indirect supply is one of the most economical places you can get a bed, so.
Do you remember, Don, how many we bought previously? Do you remember?
I don't. For some reason, I was thinking 10, but he said 11, so.
Right, that could be. I think we had to buy a special one.
We had to buy a big bin, a long bin.
Yeah, we had to buy a special one.
I can't remember if we bought one, just to try it out and see. She bought the mattresses, I think you bought the rest.
I was thinking at one point there was an individual that required an extra long one, but I couldn't do it.
And then the scrubber is, to replace it, we're looking at $2,200 for that.
Yeah, why, I was wondering why the quote said 5,600. Is that, it was adding these two together, 5,700?
I think it was adding, yeah.
Is it two separate?
Two, yeah.
It was adding the $2,200 one and the $3,400, they're separate, right?
Yeah.
So you just need one or the other?
Just the one, yeah, the 2,200, yeah.
So the issue with the beds, that you're looking to replace a dozen beds, do they have an expiration date on them?
I mean, if you looked at them, you'd say, these are old beds. Uh, I don't know if they have an expiration. I know they've been there since Kristen took over, so it's 14 years. And like I say, it's, a lot of them don't have even wheels on them, so you can't even wheel them out.
There's some of them that have been here a lot longer than that.
Yeah.
Some of them are wooden beds.
Yeah.
So where do these new beds go?
Well, that's the thing.
When the nursing home is potentially transferred to-
Well, we will buy the beds, we'll buy the equipment that's there that we could use.
You'll buy back?
Yeah, yeah.
If you, if you go on with your other bill, you're still willing to buy them back.
Yeah. I think there's 55,000 left in the fund.
Yeah, there's something like that.
Something like that.
Yeah.
But we could, it's not the end of the year yet.
Well, yeah, something could break down.
Um, I would say that we need a bid on the door issue before we can make any other decision, because that seems most pressing to me, as far as making sure that the building is in compliance. I-
I think that makes sense.
Until we know what that price is, we don't know what funds we would have available.
I think we could do the scrubber, probably. I wouldn't have a problem doing the scrubber before we get a bid on the doors, because I would say, in truth, I couldn't. Been a while since I bought any, but. I couldn't feature it being more than $1,000 a door, so.
What's the pricing, Mr. Flue?
$2,200.
And it was, um, oh, you remember John Paul had asked for some more machine?
Yeah, he was talking about getting a smaller one, maybe moving that bigger one to the, but wasn't he having that, he was having an issue with it, wasn't he?
Well, I think we just replaced the battery.
I guess if we were purchasing one for the courthouse, I wouldn't see a problem with giving ours, you know, as a donation to the operation. I guess I'm concerned about where we draw the line between providing cleaning services and products for the building as part of renting it. The way that I read the agreement, the lease agreement, we were providing everything as, as is, in its as-is condition that was already there. I don't, there was no clause about replacing with brand-new any equipment that was being used that was the county's. But I think it would be nice that we could donate, as long as ours is in working condition, if we were going to move forward with buying one for the courthouse and the general.
Same type of scrubbers?
Yeah, it's, it's a large, the one we have is too large for you.
Oh.
Really, it's too large. And he was looking at getting a smaller one, and he had talked to Jonathan at your facility. And Jonathan thought that big one would be more in line with what he could use out there, so can we have a week or so to research that?
Yeah.
And see if that's still the possibility.
Sure.
Uh, I think there is a battery issue. Battery's not charging, staying charged, but we could, we could come up with a battery or solve that issue.
I thought we were supposed to hear back from John Paul. I thought we, he was supposed to come back with-
Cleaning supplies.
Yes, sir.
He was gonna come back with a comparison price on the cleaning supplies, was what he was coming back with.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
We can find out again about the machine.
You can probably look at it, isn't it in the next room?
I think so. I think, I'm pretty sure that Jonathan and John Paul had discussed that situation. We'll see.
Yeah.
Let's see where they're at on that.
I mean, if that, like, that works.
Because we could benefit from it, for, with a smaller machine here.
Yeah.
We don't have the hallways that you have.
Yeah.
Okay, give us a cut, a week or so.
Sure.
John, on the back, I see you have another item on the assisted door.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I forgot the F.
I will attest that that is a loud deal.
This, yeah, this is-
It vibrates through the building.
Yeah, that, that's the last page of your handout, and this is the door that goes between the nursing home and the assisted living. And it is simply, the hard, the hardware and the electronics is simply worn out, just not working properly. They have to have, they have to adjust it, like, every other day. So, that door would need to be replaced, too.
That, and that's replacing the whole door is the 14,000 dollars?
Yeah, and, and the electronics, whatever goes with that.
Is that a double door?
No, no, it's a single door.
Oh, it's one of the big, yeah.
It's a large, it's a large thing.
But it's a door that the residents use.
Yeah, goes back and forth, like, a bit.
I'm assuming that this access control system business is one of the only places that does something like that in Salina? We wouldn't have comparative bids, or we, are there options for that?
I don't know whether they're the ones, maybe they put it in, or, I don't know. Few companies, sometimes they have to come out of Wichita, Kansas City. This one looks like it's out of Salina, so it's probably the closest we could get.
Is that-
You have to be certified to work with a Salina.
To do that, is this company one that could also do bids on a double corridor door?
I think so, yeah. I believe so.
Okay.
But you have to, we ran into that out there before, too, you have to be certified to-
I would, I think we, we should ask for maybe two bids on that door project, and that would be-
Get some beds on the doors, and then we'll check into the situation with the scrubber.
Yeah.
The double doors and this door.
Yeah, okay. And then-
Then we'll, we'll talk- I've analyzed, analyzed what we have left about the beds, how many we can, think we can do.
Um, I think, last time I told you that Director of Nursing has resigned, and she's moving on. And after I shared with you that we're making some budgetary changes, so you're gonna probably hear about some of this, and next year, we're going to be increasing the rates, so, but purpose is to, you know, try to improve our benefit program, our recruitment, retention, and try to get us back in the black, okay? So, just, I'd be happy to share with you more, but I think that's off.
How, how are we doing with the state reimbursements? Are we?
I, I believe we're doing better, but it's still a problem.
Still a problem.
Yeah.
There was an article, it's from Capital Journal this week-
Yeah.
-where the forum of some kind-
Yeah.
...speaks about it, and-
Yeah, and, yeah, that's right, there have been several articles, actually. There was a hearing held on that, plus, they pointed out that the number of fines that nursing homes have gotten over the past five years have increased 6,000 percent.
6,000.
6,000, yeah.
In Kansas.
Yeah, in Kansas.
Where does money go from the fine? Is what I've been looking for.
Well, basically into the general fund of the state, so.
That reduced its output of Medicaid coverage.
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, but-
And then on the same token, they don't have enough surveyors to go out there and survey.
Right, that's right, yeah, yeah, so.
It's probably kinda like the D of T.
So if someone slipped it in the bill that they would get a raise, then it would pass. They would, if they would be voting on their own rate.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Good to see y'all.
Continue to see good service there, and that's what we're, we're asking for.
Yeah.
Take care.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Grace?
Do you want to pass that back, if you want to stand to that?
I do need to discuss with the board some, some attorney-client privileged information coming into our mediation that has been scheduled. I don't need much time, but I do need a little bit.
Are you thinking 15, 10?
I think 15 is sufficient.
15, I would move we go into executive session for 15 minutes with our attorney, attorney-client privileged information. Do I have a second?
We have to have a statement for the same reasons as last week, without surprise.
Yes, thank you.
I'll, so, been moved and seconded. Have any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we will go in at, um-
I have, I'll have 10:33, by the time I can move on.
10:33, okay, that'll work.
Okay. When are you anticipating having that conversation?
Well, 11:15 or so.
Okay.
But, we can have the conversation, we can bring you back in.
I may run and go do my stuff and then come back, okay?
Okay, all right. I need a motion to authorize Jennifer to sign a agreement for mediation.
I so move.
I'll, so, okay.
Been moved and seconded, we signed an agreement for mediation. Jennifer, any questions?
Um, maybe we should have the- Maybe we should have the motion include with, um, Burschite? Burschite?
Yes, Thomas Burschite.
Burschite. Any amount of five hundred, is that correct?
With a deposit, with a deposit.
Five hundred dollars, okay.
So I move to authorize County Attorney Jennifer O'Hare to proceed with the mediation agreement with Thomas Burschite. But does she need to make the payment?
With a deposit of-
With, with a deposit, thank you, with a deposit of five hundred dollars.
I was looking about that.
Been moved in second, any questions? All in favor, say aye. I oppose. Don, you will need to count, uh, cut a check for that, please.
And I'm having her, this is titled a settlement conference agreement is what it's titled.
Okay.
So just so everyone's aware.
All right. Okay, I guess we're ready, Ms. Deborah.
The top is the descriptions that we've already gone through, um, changes that you guys suggested. Those are revised copies, tried to go through and use consistent wording, um, at all. Those are for you.
All right.
I did send them back out to department heads to the base on the changes that we made.
Have they sent their comments?
They looked back through them, yeah.
Okay, and have you, uh, what about K-CAM?
Um, I can send-
Or K?
I haven't sent them to them, but if you want us, want me to-
We probably, we probably need to look at them first and then-
Yes, um, and then I included, um, in the back, um, I tried to go through the performance evaluations and, uh, kind of shortened it-
Yes.
As you suggested.
Thank you.
It was hard because I wasn't sure what to take out and what to leave, so I can, I'm open to whatever suggestions that you want, but especially the employee one, I did get it to be where basically it was a page and then just like the comment section, and then I did have made the changes that you suggested to the self-evaluation. The one for the supervisor is there as well. Now, because they have a lot more responsibilities and duties, there's still, it's a little more than a page, if that's still too long, I can try to shorten it more. Basically, I took everything that was already there and just consolidated, condensed, made sure things weren't repetitious.
You mean because this is the second page?
That's the, um-
Is that what you mean? The evaluation is, that's the front page and that's the second?
That's the employee one, yep. And then the supervisor one, assistant, got a few more on the next, on the second page. And I hope that that was, because you said you wanted it shortened.
Deborah, I think you made a mistake when you put it together.
You think so?
I think you might've.
Oh, well Hannah helped me, so maybe we did print the same one twice. So I'm sorry. I can print new ones for you to take home with you.
I think, I think, um-
I'll, I'll reprint.
I think the front pages are maybe right, but I think the, the next two may be wrong.
That's what I-
Or the next one, third one may be wrong.
We'll fix it, the supervisor one then, because it should have a second page that looks like this. I'll, I'll reprint that.
Yeah.
They were for you to take home and to look at to see if they- So I'll reprint them and I'll bring them back down before we go.
Okay.
Um, and then the other was, you guys, I gave you the custodian and the recycling one you were guys were gonna look at, was there anything there?
I think you gave us two of the same, is that what your sense was?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah.
We don't have the second page.
Well, we-
They didn't print it right and when we reprinted it and we stapled them, I think that we just missed the other one.
Are they supposed to be identical?
No.
Okay, so you gave two of the employee ones?
That's why I said we, the page is wrong.
One of the pages is wrong?
Yes, and I'll reprint them and I'll bring them back down before we go home.
Thank you.
Because they were for you to take home.
All right, and then you were wanting to talk about custodian and the recycling?
Those were the other ones that we still need to go through that you guys had not gone through, that were ones that you would be-
Alphabetical order is the custodian comes first, right? C comes before R?
I don't, either one.
I guess the only thing that I didn't see on here, uh, it said down in, uh, marginal functions, but I think we have, the janitor, the custodian has taken over the lawn care mowing, and I'm not sure that was listed, was it?
Marginal.
And that's probably an essential function of keeping the yard moving.
Okay.
Maybe marginal would be, does he still gotta do the EMS building and the, uh, health nurse's office?
In the summer, that's part of his job?
I think he did, yes, I think he did.
That could maybe be in marginal because that may not always be-
The health department, does he do anything there? And the highway department too? So can we say in city, within city limits, county buildings within city limits?
Other county properties?
Yeah, county properties.
I think he does too.
That's nice.
Yeah, gardening, landscape, but yeah, I will, mows and trims courthouse grounds and other facilities as directed. It's under marginal.
Okay.
Is that okay or?
It probably should be in essential, I would do.
Okay, yeah.
On the courthouse grounds, I think probably would be, the other facilities, I guess.
Okay, okay.
We kind of move back and forth between that.
So I'll move the courthouse to essential.
They haven't always done it, kinda depended on time, who we had working.
Right. And I'll leave other facilities as marginal. Okay, I can do that? Anything else? Really, I think the only thing that I added to it this year when I went through was, um, the boiler functioning, I think it was the boiler. And I don't think it had been on there because they are responsible for the, the maintenance and like blowing down the unit and, and you know, the, the daily function of it and minor maintenance things they take care of.
I didn't get a custodian.
Custodian?
Last time.
She gave you one?
The last one?
It was like a couple weeks ago.
Oh, oh, the one, okay, sorry. I was looking at today's, yes, I have, I have right here this one.
I brought them in after.
It's right here, sorry.
I feel like I waste a lot of paper, so.
And after we reviewed the others.
Yeah. So I will move courthouse to essential and I'll leave other, other departments as a marginal function.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Any other questions on the custodian part?
Is there a budget just for, no?
For custodian?
Yeah. Any supplies or, so is there anything that the custodian turns into you as far as projected supplies for the next year or no? You just go off of whatever last year's expenses were?
It doesn't fluctuate much.
The only thing you really have is some new supplies.
Do we hire someone separately to do windows? Cleaning windows?
We don't clean windows. We would like him to clean windows.
And it does say cleans woodwork, baseboards, staircases, hammered windows.
I saw window sills, but why not the windows?
It says windows.
Where?
Third bullet down, essential functions.
My third bullet?
Cleans woodwork, baseboards, staircases, damn shelves.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
But you're saying they don't, he doesn't clean the windows?
We don't make him clean on the outside, the windows on the outside.
Oh, that's-
Anything else on custodian?
Is there anything in there about the scrubber, the floor, um, oh, waxes and fuffs? Have we addressed with him what the Historical Society told us about not using salt on these stone, stone steps or is-
They use a different product.
We buy something in particular?
Like he's still, we're still supposed to make sure that it gets, whatever we do use, even the special, if it gets cleaned off so that it doesn't stay on the sidewalks and the lines.
I mean, has that been addressed with him as a separate and important issue because-
It's probably something that would be a good annual reminder because you would, you know, somebody would remind you.
We used to use a different product on the steps, I don't know if we're still doing it, I don't know if we used to.
Even the back ones too, or?
No, that's the next major project, Jim. Get your bill full ready.
Would be, would probably be something to, to remind him. He's not a department head per se, kind of, I don't know how you wanna define it, um, because it's just the one person. I didn't know if he wanted included as a marginal function, um, like the bus you said quarterly, the other department heads you said monthly, I didn't know if he wanted like a regular visit from him every so often or that employee, so I didn't add anything, I wasn't sure.
I think, uh, it's covered under supervision, this position acts under the supervision of the county commissioners, I think that's okay, I don't know that we need to update-
Well, the department heads we did say monthly and the bus we said quarterly, so.
Right, right.
And I did visit with them this morning, um, gave them copies of the job description, they were absolutely fine with it. They said that they felt like their coordinator should come quarterly and if need be, one of them could or would as well, they were fine with that.
Okay, ready? Ready to move on to recycling? Okay, the first one that stands out in my mind, Deborah, is the glass. Do we wanna take that out? Because we do not, no longer recycle glass.
That is true. I don't really recycle, I'm sorry. Okay, I can remove that.
Are there, um, since this is just part-time, it doesn't exactly say that, is there an hourly? Do we have set hours?
They have to be there every second and fourth Saturday from nine to one.
I think that should be in there.
And, but they're there from eight to one because they have to clean up a place and get it ready.
Yeah.
For people that come from nine to one, so their public hours are nine to one.
Maybe if you just put in public hours, nine to one, second and fourth Saturday of the month.
Exactly, recycling day, and then-
And then they work a minimum of twelve hours per week. That was based on a motion or a maximum of twelve hours per week unless they're bailing and on the out, on the days that they're bailing, they can have, the weeks that they're bailing, they can exceed twelve hours.
Bailing cardboard?
Yes.
Uh, no.
Well-
Plastic, um, chipboard, I mean, they bale cardboard all the time. That's what's in there, but they store plastic and-
And then just occasionally consolidate it?
Good enough for a bail.
Yeah, and when they're really, when they're trying to do that, that takes longer, so there are a lot of few more extra hours. But it's part-time, um, there's a non-benefit eligible position, um, they have to stay under the thousand hours a year. I can make sure that up top, we just add that it's part-time. Can do that.
And what about, where does the material go from there?
The CB trucking comes and picks it up.
Okay.
Everything with the aluminum cans and then when they get the aluminum cans enough for a bail, they'll bail them and take them down there and sell them at whatever they're going to be.
Our, our employees take them to Salina?
No.
CB.
CB trucking.
Oh. So should that be on there?
Probably.
Deliver, delivers aluminum?
Yes. Aluminum.
Aluminum. Do they have to help load to CB trucking or do they just come and do it themselves?
I think they assist, but I don't know whether they do honestly because I think-
No, they clearly just brings a skid loader and loads himself, but-
But we do have to load into our own trailer. Because we'll load and store and then they'll come and pick it up like once every couple months.
We have a storage trailer down there. Trailer, we, we used to have to deliver it to Salina.
That's what I was wondering.
When CB started in the, um, recycling business and they just made arrangements to let them pick it up, because we used to have to take one of the highway department trucks.
Do we have to pay them?
They pick it up.
And they pick it up?
Yeah, they buy our materials.
Did you have a question?
Okay, anything else for Deborah? Thank you, Deborah, for your time.
Okay, I will update these two and I'll bring them back and if you guys will look at the evaluations, we can take a look at them again and I'll reprint the supervisor one if you guys have to take off.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Don, does the recycling center have its own, um, line item?
Yes.
In the general fund?
Ten fifteen of them.
So does it have its own, where do, do we get deposits from?
Um, yes, the county general gets the deposits.
Under recycling or? So anytime that we get money, is it a reimbursement?
No, it's recycling income.
Income?
Michael?
And we're required to have a recycling center as part of that solid waste management plan, so when we installed the, the transfer station, that was part of the program and it used to be a private group of volunteers that did it and they made a report.
Has there ever been a discussion about mandating recycling?
No.
I think that would be more of a city, they'll probably- I think in the beginning-
But the city doesn't do separate recycling, correct?
No, it's up to individuals, so-
But I don't think we can-
CB trucking offers a curbside pickup of the recyclables, I don't know if it's once in a month or once a year, but-
I don't know if the county can mandate the city recycling or jurisdiction and all, those things end at the city limits. When they first started, I ran and dated as part of their trash collection, but it got to the point where it was not economically feeding them.
For them to sort it, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Well, it did, you know, going down there, we'd get a little bit of money for it, but we don't have to haul all that to Florida, so.
Okay, Michael, why do you want to start?
Follow-up on last week, the annual inspection for those bridges were actually in biannual inspection. I told you wrong, it'd be in the book that you have upstairs.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
The annual inspection for the bridges that were inspected this year, last year's inspections and the biannual inspection included in that. It's not a separate inspection when it falls on the biannual inspection here. First sheet I gave you guys was, uh, some pricing I got, um, I'm meeting with another contractor this week and he'll be providing pricing in the near future, I don't know how long it will take him to get everything finalized, but, uh, this was the price to drive pile. And he's kinda got a set plan everywhere he goes and does it, he's doing it for numerous counties in the area now, as a lot of counties are in the same boat we are with, uh, having a certified crane with certified operators. And I had him go ahead and throw in a price of while he's there, going ahead and swinging the beams in, or the caps and then the beams also while our employees are there to tack them into place to, so we can come back and do a final weld on it.
So if I understand this right, the piling is, the cost of the piling would be thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars?
For the labor.
For the labor?
And I need to check with him to make sure, he's saying that in the event that it's less than six hundred linear feet, that he's gonna go ahead and charge us for the six hundred linear feet, and I think that's kind of a high number. So I need to visit with him and have him, if he's gonna charge us for feet driven that we didn't drive, I'll just go ahead and have him do our wing wall piling while he's there to conclude that.
Okay, so this is for OS one oh five?
Yes.
Or any other bridge.
Well, yeah, any bridge, but-
Oh, it just said bridge work one mile east of Lincoln, that's OS one.
That's the one that we're specifically discussing at this time, yes.
But it would be similar cost for other projects?
Yeah. You know, and the mobilization is lump summed in, so he said it was around twenty-five hundred for the mobilization, so you're looking at eleven hundred dollars, approximate additional to swing the cap and beams.
That's probably why.
So you wrote in this thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty, that's the total?
Yeah, I just went ahead and calculated the six hundred feet times twenty-two eighty. He charges...
They probably charge the minimum, but it includes the mobilization costs and everything, in the minimum.
Yeah.
It's not a bad front.
Now, for a two hundred thousand dollar driver.
Yeah.
We can have it done this way numerous times.
So that takes care of the recommendations? Are these, when this says, this says, "This is to serve as a quote for installing ten by forty-two steel piling associated with the restaurant structure," and that's the OS one oh five. "In addition, setting of two pier caps and fourteen steel beams included," is that?
That's on page two.
But does that include the recommended repair from the state to repair stringers? I don't know what a stringer is.
This is replacing the bridge, correct?
Yes.
So that covers the stringers? As a replacement? What is the stringers?
The labor.
Or those that?
Those are the stringers, yes, the run length of the bridge.
And that's when they say fourteen beams? That's what they're talking about, fourteen steel beams equals two stringers, because it's saying you need to repair two stringers, but this is to replace all fourteen of them?
The labor, yes, not the price of the beams.
Not the price of it, okay.
Which, and back in January, I believe you all three signed this on our bridge policy, as far as when major repairs or replacement needs to take place. What materials we're going to use to repair and replace with, and what we're not. And replacing the pile becomes a major repair, essentially total removal of the structure to begin with.
Do you have a material price?
I do not have that at this time.
So basically what you're saying is...
You know, I'm not going to have a hundred percent number until we get to the point where we say, we're going to redo this bridge, because I will have to have the engineer tell me exactly what size stringers, what size pile, what size caps will definitely be needed.
Great, so you're saying we're looking at thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty dollars in labor for a twenty-four foot, two inch bridge, and that is for piling, and it's fourteen beams wide, is basically what this is saying? Plus two pier cap settings, that's included in that?
No, it's on the second page, that's an additional thirty-six hundred dollars for the setting of the beams and caps. And mobilization, that's all lump summed in.
So you only calculated this six hundred linear feet of piling?
On the first page, yes.
Okay, so thirty-six hundred... Did you do the math already?
Twenty-seven, two eighty, I believe.
Did you do the math already? Did anybody? Did, oh, so what would it be?
Sixteen.
What would the total be, does anybody know?
Seven billion, thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Yep. And they're doing all the splice welds on the pile?
They will do the splice welds on the pile. We could do that, but then we'd have guys tied up, if the splice is need or not needed, we won't know for sure until you start driving.
Okay, so going back to, we're talking about a twenty-four foot, two inch bridge, replacing all the piling and steel replacing with steel beams and two pier caps, labor contracted out at seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Just, not, that's just for setting, driving the piling and setting the beams in place, that's not, that's not building the bridge or whatever.
Right, so, and what you're saying is you actually need an engineer's help to figure out how to do the rest of it?
The size of the beams.
The size of the beams for us, yes.
So do you have any numbers for material and/or labor associated with the rest of the repairs for that particular bridge?
Speculating on what we've priced out before and inflation, steel's going to be looking around forty thousand dollars.
For this size, for this twenty-four foot-ish?
It's going to be very close.
Is that total materials, or just for?
That would be all the steel needed to replace it.
And you have concrete?
No.
They're what?
They'll be all steel.
They shy away from concrete. Most places have gone and built the steels because they're so much cheaper to build.
Cheaper and rapid.
Faster and...
So my question is, it, we're, we're formulating an estimate here for this size of a bridge, and we're about a third of the way there, so we need to look at what, what else those other two-thirds of the costs are going to be. The rest of the manpower and labor that you would provide for the rest of the project, and the materials in addition to that, there's also the time aspect that you have to calculate. But I guess my question is, if we're looking at this, because this report came back for OS one oh five, what other bridges are in this same or worse condition that would be a similar size that would come ahead of that as far as a scheduling goes? To create a schedule of something like that, because we'd need X amount of cost?
As far as condition goes, that should be, that's about the worst one, I don't know of. Yeah.
Is that the most highly trafficked?
It catches a lot of traffic, I don't have the exact traffic count on it.
Forty.
Is what they're saying?
Yeah.
I'll bet it's more than that, but I'm just speculating. You know, it gets used a lot.
Is this breakdown that they provide with the description of the bridge, the average daily traffic, the sufficiency rating, and the year built, and then the maintenance? Have, have you ever taken this and put them all on one spreadsheet to compare numbers? Yourself, so that you can see which bridge has the most daily traffic, which bridge has the least sufficiency rating for itself? And then which ones have the least amount of repairs due versus which ones have the most intensive repairs that are needed?
I know we pretty much have those sufficiency ratings here. In last year's two thousand sixteen biennial. It appears that there's three timber structures that have a less sufficiency rating. But the condition of the bridge is in better shape.
So if you were to take this OS one oh five and do the minimum recommendations here, which is two stringers out of fourteen, I understand you're saying you're getting, when you replace the piling itself, you're already getting into a major repair. But financially speaking, to replace, to replace two out of fourteen, have we ever done the calculations on how many bridges we can do that to? And the cost savings to apply to multiple bridges to keep multiple bridges open for a longer period of time together?
I visited with our county engineer on this particular structure.
Who's our county engineer?
Tanner Yost, he's...
Oh, I wasn't aware that we contracted him.
We didn't contract him, but that's who I use when I have questions.
Uh-huh.
And he stated that the way that report is done, is they have to put the minimum recommendation on there. He said that they're not going to come in and just put in the report that the bridge needs replaced. But he said that the bridge needs replaced. That they do not recommend using eighty-year-old timbers in repairing a bridge. You know, I could understand it if there's just a stringer cracked or something like that, facing a stringer. But when you have to strip the bridge completely apart to do pile,
Yeah.
it makes no sense to go back with the old timber.
So when this one at OS ninety-eight says, "Replace pile at abutments," are you talking about the same process?
Yes.
Yes.
So how soon are you planning on doing OS fifty-nine, which just says, "Remove the drift, clean and paint steel stringers?"
Whatever the schedule kind of fits in, I still, when we can do it, how high the water, conditions, all that stuff.
Do we have other bridges with those minimal recommendations of just, when they say, "Remove drift," what?
Logs and wash them.
Logs, limbs, stuff, they're lodged underneath of it. Because it's just low down, just the low water causing damage. It's just very...
Everybody goes along with the cliffs.
Three, two, three feet off the water.
Cuts the trees back so it doesn't get their equipment and they're shuddering the creek.
So who does that, is that bridge crew responsibility, or is that?
Most of the time.
Most of the time, I'd say.
If it's bad enough, we hire a contractor to come in. Low water crossings out here on the Elkhorn, multiple times, we've had to call in a contractor with a large excavator, but...
Yeah, we don't necessarily have the right equipment to do some of it.
Some of it was paid for by finger, but...
So you said you were working with another contractor too on that?
Yeah.
Bridge out there?
Be another one coming in this week, and listen about it, look at the structure.
Okay. Okay.
So what's the timeframe to do something like the OS fifty-nine, where it says, "Remove drift, clean and paint steel stringers"? How many bridges do we have that need that specific work done? And what's the timeframe on getting something like that done? Can we put the bridge crew on that specific task for several bridges, or? I mean, that seems like minimal to me while you're taking time to prepare the rest of the quote for a bridge replacement.
Not necessarily, there's other busy, other things going on too, like we're forcing them out on one today, like I say, or while you're working on stuff, this here, like I say, will depend on the water situation under there, where we can get under there and clean them out and stuff. And I'm not sure whether that is worthy of cleaning and painting that stringers in that, maybe it is, but...
Are you saying to just let them go until they need replaced?
Well, I don't know how good a shape, I didn't think they were probably as good a shape as they're sounding like they are, they're about just clean and rest and paint them, but maybe they are better than I'm thinking.
What do you guys use, a sandblaster, if it's steel, or what do you use to clean them before painting them?
Very seldom do we do that on any of the bridges in the past.
How do you clean them, just scrape them?
We'd have to scrape them, grind it, grind it, grind it off with a brush.
When's the last time we did that to a bridge?
Well, I don't know, I don't think we have in the past, never had that situation come up before.
We've never had a steel bridge that needed painted?
Well, they probably could all sand painting sometime, but that's never come into play before.
I don't just know of anybody that does paint their bare steel on a bridge.
What?
You can buy galvanized or coated beams to begin with.
So you don't have to follow the state recommendation of what to do? That says, "Paint the steel stringers."
That's the engineer's recommendation.
It's an engineer's recommendation, it may just... No, it's nothing that has to be done, but it comes as a recommendation, I guess.
You'd have to have a full-time paint crew if you were going to go out there and paint all the steel bridges.
I guess I'm confused, Tanner Yost is from Kirkman Michael.
Correct.
And this is Kirkman Michael's report as far as state regulations, what they think needs to be done? Right?
Yep.
I mean, it's their job to keep up with what state recommendations and regulations would be?
Their feelings are, what they think kept you down, I don't know if it was really state recommendation.
Well, okay, I understand the recommendation isn't coming from the state itself, but it's the engineering firm's job to be up to date on what state regulations are, and then they would give you a suggestion based on their understanding of what the state's regulations are. And so the same Kirkman Michael saying, "Replace the piling and repair two stringers," is the same Kirkman Michael that is saying, "Just go ahead and replace the whole bridge"? Yes, or no, or? I guess you brought, you brought this...
I think what they're giving you there is an option to replace any bridge.
Yeah, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to discuss financially, you know, what is our plan of action for the future, because we can't just take each bridge that needs two stringers replaced and replace the whole thing. I understand what you're saying about getting into the piling, and you're already at that, you know, level of stripping the bridge down, is what you said, I, I understand that. But financially speaking, to go through the time that it takes to do that, and maybe have ten years to replace the other twelve out of the fourteen beams, the cost, the labor to do that, et cetera, that, that should be part of the calculation, is to see how many bridges can we keep open by doing that versus replacing one specific bridge and closing three in the meantime, because we replaced a hundred percent of it instead of fifty percent of it, and I'm just...
The recommendation on one oh five is to replace the piling as soon as possible and repair two stringers. If you're going to pull, you got to pull everything off of there to replace the piling. You can't drive piling through the bridge. So what they're saying is that they would recommend putting eighty-year-old stringers, wooden stringers, back under the bridge. So it's more than just, it's more than just two stringers, they're asking to replace all the piling.
They have dirt boards, it's fast and it's... Piling and wing walls, that all has to be tearing out to the other piling. It's like starting over with a new bridge, so we just will do it, instead of replacing a couple of things and coming back in half a dozen years and spending that amount of money and time and labor to do it all over again.
Well, once you replace the piling, you're not going to have to go back and do that. I mean, that, once that's done, it's done for years, correct?
Put eighty-year-old stringers back on it.
You don't need to put the stringers, dirt boards and wings, and wings and all that stuff back on there, because they're all, you're going to have to buy all new, and you can buy steel cheaper, you can buy wood plank and stuff nowadays.
Okay, so my question is, how many bridges do we have in this or similar circumstances where we need to make that call?
I don't have an exact number.
Not exact, there's several of us.
There's quite a few.
Just like several we've closed in the last few years.
And it's not, not only these bridges, it's on this inspection list. There's bridges that everybody calls bridges that are not. There's little wooden bridges, they've got to be at least twenty foot span on them, and we've got a lot. It's eighteen, nineteen foot span, old wooden bridges that's in the same condition as this, so we also have to consider those too, so...
So when are we going to contract with an engineer to help us create this plan?
Let's see, I think we've talked about this multiple times, and I said that I didn't think there was any use in doing it until after the first year, when we had the money to do any projects.
Right, so it's December fourth?
Yeah. And we're still in budget, in two thousand seventeen budget year. And we're still in budget, in two thousand seventeen budget year.
So you...
You can talk about it, but you can't approve it or it hits this year's budget, I think is probably what he's trying to say.
I understand that, but with three meetings left in the year, you would think that the discussion would need to take place so that we can have our highway department understand that that's part of the new year process.
I don't think we need it in January first.
No, we need it on ten years' good January first.
They're getting it anytime we call.
Let's, let's move on, I think we've cussed this enough, discussed it enough. What else you have, Michael?
A request from Chris DaChini to close a road. Section of Milo Drive, Northern Vesper Township, between K eighteen Highway and One Hundredth Road. A little half a mile there.
What township are you in?
Vesper. Vesper Grant Line.
Vesper Grant Line? What'd you say now, again, tell me?
From eighteen Highway and One Hundredth Road, we're going east off of One Hundredth Road on the section line.
That little half-mile structure, whatever it is?
Yeah. And that would also eliminate the old timber bridge.
Landowner request, landowner requesting?
Yes.
We're just dealing with...
You're doing the, you're doing Milo Drive, you're doing the east-west grid?
Yes, yeah, Milo Drive, east and west.
About a half mile?
Approximately yes.
Two ones land on both sides?
Uh, Walkers on the south, Cheneys, and Kruegers on the north.
Are they all? You talking to all of them?
A half mile.
It should be closed if we can go along with it, I'm fine with it.
You want to visit with them before we send out letters?
Thank you.
Or have her visit with them? We probably need to have an idea of it's going to be acceptable, who it's going to affect.
Okay.
I've been asked several times to be able to share locations with onlookers so that they know what we're talking about without pulling up a personal map of sorts. Could you give me the, the location again, please?
It'd be Milo Drive between One Hundredth and K eighteen Highway.
It's a power line or anything?
For how, for how?
It's a half a mile.
Approximately half a mile, I don't know the exact distance of it.
Somewhere around there. You know where Dan Cheneys is? Straight, it's straight east of Dan Cheneys there. Most of the time.
I believe it's already a minimum maintenance, right?
It's minimum maintenance now.
And like I told these guys while you were away, there's also an old timber bridge that could be closed off.
With that process? And how many landowners?
There'll be three.
Three in addition to Cheneys, or that's more, so two others? And you can, you can contact them?
No, no problem, go ahead and contact them.
That's all I have until we start visiting gravel, that's.
Bob, do you have anything?
Well, I'd say we finished the four seventy bridge, Twentieth Road there. I may have a little cleaned up, but we're working on a bridge. One south of there, little box bridge is undermined, the water was going under the floor, it was about that much worse down under there. So we're pouring the土all around it today. And if we get a chance, the weather's decent, we're going to go in and break holes out and put土all material under it to keep it from settling down more. And we've just been doing some spot grabbing stuff around, other than the bridge work,土more. That's about all we got going right now. Get that all up, we got it for you.
We, we're ready for snow if we ever get any.
Yeah, we got snow fence all put up here last week while the weather was, wind wasn't blowing like it is today, it was decent. Yeah, we've got a little mowing to do yet, but is waiting on hydraulic motor for one of the motors and it's come in last week, so we'll try to get it going. So I think most of it pretty well ready, I hope.
How are we doing on the weight limit signs?
They're all up.
They're all up?
And get this cement poured on this, we're probably going to start in around on our signing project and try to lower that stuff down. Probably still got some that's not laid over, bent over, beat up, everybody's running over.
Does anybody have anything for the guy?
Yes, where are we, where are we with the department's use of the mobile three eleven program that you found and you wanted to implement? And I think we've been paying for the internet services for it for now, what, maybe six months?
Probably.
So where are we with the process of implementing that?
They're all got them, and they are using them. Some a little more than others. And I think a little bit of it comes into a learning curve. Some people are not real comfortable with it yet, but they're, I'm trying to help them along with it. I do know I have a meeting or a webinar with them again next week sometime, I believe it is, and we're going to discuss some more things and some options.
With the company, the company does the webinar?
Yeah, it's not really, it is a webinar, but it's not, but it's more of a one-on-one discussion with program manager for it. There's some things I'd like to see changed on it and some stuff added and stuff like that, so we're evolving with it. I think the more somebody's used it, the more they're understanding it. Some of the guys are having some issues with technology.
Yeah.
Probably the younger ones, huh? Younger ones are having problems.
So...
Anything else before we move to gravel? Okay, we'll go to the gravel and gravel pits. You have something you want to say first, Michael, or recommendations, or?
As far as the price of the gravel, I know that's been something you guys have been discussing amongst yourselves. I was made aware of some taxation changes that have occurred. I was unaware of that until late last week. Did some checking into it and found that the acreage is being used for a gravel pit is being taxed now as a commercial property instead of farm use, I guess.
The total acreage that, that holds gravel, or the acreage that's...
That we are mining.
The mined area?
Just the active area.
And I have a little question on how that's being figured myself. That's something I'm going to have to take up with the appraiser's office. I believe they're using old maps.
So I guess, do you know, are they just taxing the active area, or is it the...
That's the way I understand it, based on aerial maps that they've got.
So, so do they do that yearly? Because those pits change, don't they?
They, I would assume so. That's not a answer I can give you. I, I don't do that process.
On our lease agreements with them, I, I'm not that familiar. Is that a set acreage on those?
We typically lease the entire area of their property, you know? So if there are gravel pits that's on an eighty, we typically write the lease for the entire eighty acres. Because there are several pits that we can mine here, and then we can go three, four hundred feet, we can mine here, you know, as the gravel moves under the ground, but...
Commercially, they are not getting any money except for where we are active, right? And they are allowed to farm where we're not active?
That's true.
So it would remain agriculture land? I guess those are some of the questions I think the appraisers have got to take into consideration myself.
Yes.
The other thing that has been brought to our attention, as I know you know, that they were concerned about how much land is leased, you know, that we're using? And we're paying a hundred dollars at the present time for that, you know? I guess my question is, are some of those areas larger that we should be paying more because we're active in more of the land than we are, you know? If we're, if we're active and they cannot farm ten acres, we should probably be paying for ten acres. If we're only disturbing three or four acres, we probably should only, we should be leasing, paying for three or four acres of rent, for rented ground, is what I'm saying, you know? Where we're doing a hundred acre, or a hundred dollars, it, it doesn't, the size of the pit has nothing to do with it. I guess is what I'm saying. So, so I guess, you know, for the farmers, I think one of their concerns is that they're not able to produce on that land, so we should be giving them a fair cash rent. And a hundred dollars isn't going to cover much more than two acres at the most, I guess is what I'm saying, you know? If they cannot farm two acres. If we're holding out four, five acres, we're really not paying them yearly probably enough.
But don't have much gravel.
We're on everything, get yourself right where we're at. Yeah, maybe we got this all leased that they still farm.
And there are some pits that they will never do anything with, not even ever graze or anything. I don't know how you figure acreage on something like that either, you know?
Well...
Every pit in a sense is a little bit unique.
An ag use would be, come into, you know, is the land forecrop land, or is it wasteland, or is it, uh... You know, what, what are we doing? What are you, what's it available, I guess?
Mr. Chairman, I asked the appraiser to join us so that we could have a discussion about it. I'm a little concerned because, Mr. O'Hare, you just said a few minutes ago that they must be using old maps and that you weren't sure how that was working. But in January of two thousand seventeen, you provided a map.
Oh, okay, I'm going to interrupt. I'm using aerial photos that are two thousand fifteen.
Right, but just upstairs you told me that Mr. O'Hare provided you a map.
Right, but where I'm delineating from is aerial photos from fifteen, no.
But he was concerned that there were old maps being used to find out which pits were being taxed versus, you know?
No, no, no. No, no.
Okay, so how do we know which ones are being taxed, which ones are active?
Well, we got, like we said, I got, we got the list from, from Michael.
What list?
The gravel pit list.
The state of the park.
Yeah.
So do we have active pits that are not being taxed?
I, I'll, I'll say, yes, we found two of them that we did not get on the tax this year that should have been. I just found two of those we were working on.
Were those part of the list that was provided to you?
That I do not know. Terry's the one who got the list, Terry's the one who...
Can we have a copy of that list, or do you have to talk to the... That should be public record. I don't think it has any personal information attached to it.
Terry's the one who does that, I have to, she has to take her, had to take her to the hospital when he fell off a ladder. So it was emergency deal. I'm the only one in the office, so, but, yeah. So then what we did, what she did, she does the delineation, she went to the aerial map and just drew out where we could see where the gravel pits were, where the pits were. And then we did that acreage times the twelve hundred dollars an acre that we use. We use that twelve hundred dollars for any commercial ag, like the cell towers.
So you're going with an aerial?
Yeah, we use the twelve hundred dollars that we use for like the pads and the roads for wind towers and the pads and stuff for, for cell towers. Yes, we, we use them.
So you're not visiting the pit to see active?
No, we're just, yeah, because we have...
So you really don't know the active, how many acres are actually being used at that time?
We're using, no, we're using the, we're using the aerial. And like we discussed this morning with Michael, was that you had discussed that with, or was that Terry had discussed that with?
What's that?
To, to actually find out exactly the acres, it would, it'd be hard for you to go, you'd have to, you would have to...
You could go walk, measure with a measuring wheel.
Right, that would be the thing we'd have to do, but...
I mean, you could take a drone?
You know, and we do, we do all our ag, all our map delineation for ag and stuff, we do it off our aerial photos.
So to, to tax a pit or to not tax a pit, is that a county call? Or are you saying that that is, it's a state mandated, but we haven't done it in the past?
No, and that's, that's my fault. I should have been doing it ever since nineteen ninety when we did state it.
We can't supersede that and decide that our, we're exempting our own landowners?
No, no, because then I will be in trouble with the state.
So then our gravel price is basically, I mean... Yeah, at twelve hundred dollars an acre, I don't know what the average size mining area is, but we'd have to take out twelve hundred cubic yards.
Well, like Saunders was, Saunders was ten acres. One other one I looked up was five acres, it just depends on...
But is that ten acres of dug ground that's been overturned?
Then after the county moves out, that particular piece, like, shouldn't even be on the tax.
It would go back as waste.
Because it's worthless, it's tragical.
Right, it'd go back on as waste.
Waste?
Our waste use value is ten dollars an acre.
Because there's so many pits now that the trees have grown up in old pits, it's totally junk.
Right, and those we, and those we have, those we have delineated as waste. Because they aren't, they aren't crop land, they're not pasture. Now, if that's in a pasture, then it still is pasture. But if you have a gravel pit like that or wasteland that's in crop land, then it's none of this waste.
I don't, I just have to argue about it should be waste, no matter where it's at.
My question is on the acres. If you're not visiting how many acre, if you're not visiting the pit to see how many are active and you go by aerial, I don't think aerial can give you an accurate acreage.
Does, does the government use it for crop stuff? Do they use aerial map?
Yeah, we're using the, yeah, we're using that as they are aerial.
But the question is, if you mined five acres of it in two thousand sixteen and you added an additional five acres in two thousand seventeen, that previous five acres, if it's being taxed at ten acres the following year, is no longer being used because it's already been mined. So how do you know the active portion for any given year when that overturned spot may have already been depleted?
This is something we'll have to work on with Michael and stuff, because like I said, this is the first year I put them on. So everything is not...
Well, the beginning of this conversation, it, it was being insinuated that there had been no ongoing conversation here between the appraiser's office and the highway department. So that needs to be clarified for us often.
No, like we haven't had a conversation.
No, no, Michael and I have had a conversation.
Late last week.
Yeah, right.
He stated that.
Yeah, so then, like I said, this is the first year I've done them. Like I said, I'm not going to go back and collect taxes on the years I, that should, should have been. It was something that was brought up through the state that I realized that I should have had put these on. Because they aren't, okay, we have different categories. You have residential, you have commercial, you have ag, and you have other. Okay, if it's not commercial, we can do it as other, but your assessment rate is at thirty percent. So commercial is at twenty-five percent. And actually it's commercial because you are getting income off of it.
I don't know how we can justify that when the income isn't even going to cover the taxes on it.
Can I ask, you know, like, we're, like, we're paying taxes in the rear. So whatever January first was, you were paying like what you had for sixteen. So how much money are you guys getting, like in sixteen, how much money did you get from, from these gravel pits?
But does that matter since you're not taxing us back then?
Well, yeah, because I'm taxing you for what you had in sixteen. January first, you're taxing in a rear is what you had in sixteen.
Yeah, it's previous year.
Right, right. So it's eighteen, we'll be taxing for what you had in seventeen, because we do it at January first. We don't change, I mean, we do valuations January first, we do not change values in, in the middle of the year.
So what, I mean... So what, I mean. Saunders here, so I'll pick on her. What, what kind of dollars are we talking?
Do what?
Taxes on that gravel pit.
On hers, five hundred and.
Eighty-eight.
Five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. But what I'm trying to say is, you know.
My point is, I just want it to be fair across the board. Everybody gets taxed and the acres are correct. Because right now it's not ten acres that is being mined.
Okay.
So that is my thing. That's what I want.
You know, if, if we can, if we can have somebody, you know, if we can.
So is that an abatement process?
Yes.
Because it's already been.
Well, if it's something we have missed delineated, no, I can do the abatement. But if, if it's something that.
My thing is, mine is ten acres when blocks is fifteen acres.
So if you would look at the map, you could see that ours is not ten acres.
That would be, and you might be right, I might have, that might have to be done as a payment under protest.
Do you have any idea how much gravel we've got out of that pit? How long have we had it? Eight, ten years? Nine years?
I believe ten years.
Ten years?
That's when you start paying them.
So is this only taxed?
Over a hundred thousand cubic yards.
On active contracts?
Over a hundred thousand dollars in the last ten years.
Correct.
So if you don't have an active contract, if your contract has expired, if it's just sitting there, even though it's been mined, it's not taxable commercially?
Okay, if it's a, if it's a lease, now, like I said, I don't understand gravel leases completely. Until this week, last week, I didn't know anything on gravel leases. But if it's still a current lease and then if the lease is no longer and it gets put back.
It expires.
Right, right, then it goes back to, like I said, the waste.
So if we, if we double the price of gravel. If they got a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars in the last ten years, that's going to be two hundred thousand dollars in the last, in the next ten years or whatever. Five hundred and twenty-five dollars a year in taxes.
Right. Because no matter what you do to the paying the gravel, that doesn't affect what value. And right now I've got twelve hundred dollars, which is actually low for market value because pasture land is even selling more than twelve hundred dollars an acre. So I don't even have.
But the market value of the sale price of the gravel in Lincoln County is not reflective of a market value outside of the circumference of our county lines?
No, I'm not going outside our county line. The twelve hundred dollars is what I got in Lincoln County.
At a dollar a cubic yard?
No.
No, no.
Value of the land.
No, no, that's the, for acre.
Value of pasture land.
Value of pasture.
But is pasture land commercial?
No, it's ag.
So you're changing the status to commercial because it's, it's selling a product?
Right.
And the sale price of the product is market value, current price right now is.
We don't go by production, no. It is, okay, our land, okay, you go out here and buy a piece of land. And what you pay for it is considered the sale price or the market value of it. Let's say you go out in here and buy an eighty pasture and you pay eighteen hundred dollars an acre. Somebody else goes out and buys an eighty and pays eighteen hundred dollars an acre. That shows you that, that the value of pasture, sale price of the market value in Lincoln County for pasture is eighteen hundred dollars.
Classified as agricultural.
Right, so like I said, the commercial, the, the cell towers, any of that stuff that is delineated out of the ag land. We do as, we have to do as a market value.
Right, and what I'm saying, in the market of gravel. You, you're saying that its commercial value is equal to that of the commercial value of other commercial properties.
Correct.
But the fair market value that you're going to get for the sale of gravel, it doesn't touch the fair market value of what commercial property is going for. There's, I know you can't change the, the valuation of commercial. But what I'm saying as a county, if we're paying into the gravel market, we're paying into it to these landowners.
Right.
So we aren't touching the value that they're paying on a commercially. Designated piece of property.
You're not buying that. You are, you're leasing it, so you're paying it for a product.
Right.
Right, so you're not, you're not, you're paying for the product. You're not buying the land.
But if you sold an acre just because it had gravel on it, you're not going to touch commercial value of commercial property? You, you have to be within the market of sale. If I sold.
Okay, so if somebody would come to me and say, hey, I want to buy these, these five acres or ten acres for gravel. And the county actually would own it. Then I would get my twelve thousand dollars. And then the county would have to pay the hundreds of thousands of dollars they pay the landowners to get the gravel. It would be their pit, their gravel, and they could do what they, they want with it.
This poses another question that I asked you earlier. So gravel pits. So a farmer has a gravel pit, but they don't lease it to the county. They lease it to High Plains Sand? Or how do they get taxed?
They would, they should.
So they have to report to you. Do you think somebody's going to report to you, hey, I got a gravel pit, hey, I want taxed?
But I'm going to, I'm going to approach these like High Plains Sand and find out which ones they have.
What is the state statute for the required taxation for that?
It's the, the reappraisal one, the KS whatever it has. I don't have it with me right now.
Isn't that, and one of the requirements of tru- reappraisability drives every mile of road in the county once a year.
Yeah.
And that's how, that's how you locate gravel pits.
And that's how you change delineation on that.
Then how did he specifically miss a few?
Because those we did not drive, we did those by maps.
I thought he drove every mile of road.
We look at every residential property. Final review on every building. Every six years, we physically look at a sixth of or whatever part of the county. And redo those. So every six years, the county is completely relooked at.
So when you, like when this just came out, so you didn't have people coming at you, wouldn't you, before you say, hey, I'm going to tax these gravel pits? Wouldn't you go out and assess before you start doing this? Just to, so nobody, everybody's coming at you like this?
Well, yes and no, but like I told you, when you got your valuation notice in March, you would have had an F, an A, and a C. So at that time you would have seen that there was a C class and at that time you could said, hey, why do I have a C class? That's why we change, we send out valuation notices in March to give people the opportunity to, to. Look at their value, look what we have on it, and at that time they can file an informal hearing on it. Or the next time they can do an informal was payment protest.
So I, I go down like a popular road and I see a gravel pit that's being used, and I know you travel that road. So you have to know about that gravel pit. So why isn't that gravel pit taxed? Why didn't you think, oh, well, maybe that gravel pit needs to be?
Well, cause I get, I mean, the leases, you know, and, okay. Let's say I opened a gravel pit in the middle of the year. I open it for my own purpose. But my family wants to come and get some gravel, you know, meaning my immediate family or related family, and comes and gets gravel. That isn't necessarily a commercial gravel pit. Right? You know, that's not necessarily a commercial gravel pit.
You're not selling it. You're not selling it.
Right, so if I, somebody opens one in the middle of the year, somebody comes and gets three loads of gravel. And at the end of the year, they close it. That's the middle of the year. I can't change that. It's what it is January first.
So I'm, I'm back on the statute. If you can, I, I would like to know the number of that. But I guess I'm wondering, does the state statute authorize us to tax the gravel pits or is it?
No, the gravel pits. Okay, it's not listed you have to do gravel pit. It's listed classification. You have those classification and every piece of property. Has to, you fall under some of those classifications.
I don't understand it.
I wish that. I bought a piece of property. I got, I own the mineral rights. I can do whatever I want to do.
Yeah, how does that work with mineral rights?
There's various minerals and there's other minerals, correct? All minerals aren't the same.
We don't have oil and gas and any of that.
But I'm saying, according to the statute, it's authorizing us to tax at a.
No, it's giving, telling me I have to value by classification. I have to follow state requirements and statute to classify each piece of property.
But does it forbid us to have an exemption if we are in a land contract with a landowner?
Yes, it does. I have.
Where is that?
Okay, every year what we have called is compliance. The state comes and checks my procedures and what I do. If I don't follow procedures and stuff.
So the state missed this from nineteen ninety to two thousand sixteen?
Well, I mean.
That's interesting.
It doesn't exactly, it doesn't exactly list every little thing. Yes, I did miss it. I missed it. I could go back three years and, and tax these people for three years back. I'm not going to because it was my fault. I missed it.
Oh, I'm not trying to place blame on you. I think personally that there should be some sort of agreement where if they're having to pay more taxes than what they're actually gaining. I mean, that, it basically restricts them from wanting to enter into contractual, right? Or more, way more expensive for us to even purchase it.
But you gotta look, we're increasing the cost to two dollars a yard.
Okay.
We, we paid them a hundred and some thousand dollars over the last ten years for gravel, which is now.
And didn't get taxed.
At this rate, it's going to be two hundred thousand dollars worth of gravel.
I don't even have that much gravel left in our pits, so.
Well, I'm just using, I'm just using your pit as an example. I'm just using your pit as an example.
I think Michael has that.
No, I see what you're saying. We, we only got the ag land value or whatever back on that investment. But we were also underpriced for how many years, so you gotta take that into consideration.
But I guess what I'm.
Even two dollars from what we were given as examples is still under what the average market value would be.
It should take three dollars, you'd block a thousand dollars of that off for the hundred dollar lease.
I said through the, there should be a hundred and two thousand, a hundred and thirteen cubic yards that we filed.
And that's dollar amount that they've been paying?
Yes.
Okay.
You gotta tick off a lot of the.
It's a dollar amount, okay. So like her, like Michael just told you, in a ten year time, she got a hundred and two thousand dollars off that gravel. First time I taxed her was five hundred and, five hundred forty-eight, five hundred.
Five hundred eighty.
Five hundred eighty-eight dollars. You know, so, I mean.
When they first put in the wind farms, I remember, Ellsworth County Appraiser refused to tax that base as commercial. But state dictated that it had to be taxed as commercial. And somewhere along the line, he's put a tax in there and my understanding is it's about four times higher than the pads in Lincoln County.
The same appraiser?
No.
A new, a new appraiser?
No.
Yeah. Same appraiser, state.
No, not you, I'm saying the same appraiser.
Yes, yes.
Nate finally stepped in and made him do it.
Yeah, so what he did, you know, I do it just by the acres. So a lot of these wind towers and stuff where the pads, if they don't have roads. You know, only have a couple acres.
See, I find that interesting because with home rule, basically, you know, philosophically, we should be able to dictate how we. How we mandate our own property tax because that property tax isn't going to the state. So that's a misuse, an abuse of power by the state is what it is.
It's, it's, and it's, and the state has, it's been years, I mean.
Property tax does go to the state though. They get one point five mils. So they have an vested interest in the, in the appraisals.
But the, the local authority, the local government is being diminished in that process. It's a, it's a political philosophical idea. It's not necessarily logistical, you know, detailed. Status quo, I understand that. I'm saying local government derives its power and money from property tax. State does not rely on the property tax to operate. However, they're definitely benefiting taking their little percentage by them mandating certain things to the local governments. Which may inhibit people, just like in our situation, from even contracting with the county to give up their gravel so that we can service our own roads. It's an inhibitor and it's an abuse and an over, overreach of state power, which is not, that's not the way that the system was initially created. It was, I mean, county governments existed in Kansas before Kansas was even a state. So for the state to then come in and control how or why we're doing that is a.
You make a thousand dollar an acre off your ground, Jim?
Could make fifty first.
Yeah. I agree with you there because, you know, how many people can say they had, can make that much money off without any expense?
Ten thousand dollars worth of gravel out of your pit a year on ten acres, that's a thousand dollar nature.
The expense of any, anything.
And no farming, no, no chemical, no seed, no tractor.
My thing is that was, this is something new that wasn't in my contract before. So when you put something new on me, then that's what it gets upset, when you haven't taken any out for this year, a whole year is what gets me.
But like I said, you know, it's done as in arrears, so what it was.
So like next year, two thousand eighteen, she'll get taxed on.
Two thousand seventeen's.
And zero gravel.
That will have to work out, see how, cause it depends on what they do on the leases and stuff on that one, yeah, that one I.
Well, then you have to consider turning in sales tax.
Taken out and the thing closed is what I want done, so if I can get on with it, that's all I want.
Okay.
So I, I would propose that we have some kind of written statement, whether we publicize it in the paper or however we do. We're changing the gravel price and we can say, you know, our price has been low. And the justification is, is that, yes, we have paid out a lower price to all these previous landowners who have been. Who their, their gravel has been depleted over these years, but they haven't been taxed on it.
It's a double edged sword if you ask me, yeah, because if you start looking at the valuation of the property on the income that you bring in, taxation could hypothetically go through the roof. As far as land value goes.
If you're going to value it commercially, it should be part of the equation no matter what. So because it wasn't, doesn't mean that it's not going to. I'm saying that's a justification statement to the public, you know? Well, my contract is up for my gravel and all these years I got paid a dollar. Now they're getting two dollars just like that overnight. Well, yeah, but they're also going to be paying taxes on it, whereas they haven't in the past. It's just a justification to show, yes, they're getting paid double now. Good for those who have active contracts. Like yours is expiring, you pay your last bit of taxes on it, they take out your last bit of gravel. You got one dollar a yard all this time, but you didn't pay the taxes on it. I mean, it's, it's kind of just where we are in transitioning.
Right, it's, yeah, you know, all the money they, I mean, the gravel that's all been taken out there, no, they haven't.
But I think the question becomes then, who's going to physically survey the spot and say?
We'll have to work that out and, and, you know, do, do something. And like I said, this is the first year, you know, we did it off maps. If we have to go out and do some measuring or. You know, have the help with Michael to do some measuring, we'll have to, you know, like I said, this is the first year, this is a, a new deal to me. I did not, honestly, I didn't have any reason to know anything about gravel leases. That's not my job. So I didn't know how.
Well, the land's already being taxed agriculturally. You wouldn't think like, oh, I'm going to add in a, a commercial tax for this one separate acre or.
Well, and it's not double taxed. It's not like we're taxing it for ag land and then on top of that ten acres, taxing it for commercial.
No, I'm saying for those ten year, twenty, thirty years, it, it was just already taxed at its current rate, whether it was into a pasture or into crop field or.
Well, like Quartzsite, all of Quartzsite's pits have been on the tax bill for quite a few years.
When you're looking at a pit like, when you're looking at a pit like the Bowlby pit, it's been there since the fifties. Uh, assume you're going to tax the area that we're actually working and the rest of it is taxed as waste ground.
Can you tell me if that one's on the list?
That was one we will have to do and have to tax. Cause there's a couple on that map that are new, like that we won't put on till eighteen. There was two of them on that map.
So you won't backtax those that you forgot or didn't or missed?
I can go back, I'll see, I'm, I'm doing that a tax, but, I mean, I, I missed them, you know? I'm sorry I missed them, but I, I don't know how I'll have to handle that one.
You've missed them for twenty years, so one more year is not going to make a lot of difference.
For which Terry? Now, oh, I thought you meant Terry in my office.
Well, yeah, yeah, I forgot about that.
Okay, do we have any other questions for?
Thank you for explaining.
Well, Michael, you think two dollars is reasonable to, to move forward to? Or you think we're? Would you say Mitchell County is at what, two and a quarter, two?
Little over two, I think.
A little over two?
You know, I, I think it would be fair. You know, it's hard for anybody to pick a number on that.
Yeah.
If you compare it to Salona, you're way low, you're only about half as much.
They don't have gravel pit that's always?
I know that they buy gravel. They're paying five dollars and ninety cents.
Well, I think we want to keep away from comparing ourselves to Salona as much as possible.
Is that deliberate?
No, that's, that's just the gravel. You get, leave them in county to get it.
Instead of you guys making the decision today, can I have you maybe think about something? When Sandra was in last week, I kind of had thought about it, and, and I agree, it seems a little bit unfair that she got a hundred dollars and she has a five hundred eighty something like tax bill. I kind of wondered if maybe we shouldn't go on a cash rent basis, where we rent the property, and then maybe, you know, their proposal was to go up to two fifty per yard. Um, I think was what Jeremy had suggested, and he said maybe a little bit this year and a little bit next year.
Two dollars?
I think he said two fifty.
He said two fifty.
Not Jeremy, um, Jeremy Roseford, I think he said two fifty.
Two dollars, and you said you'd move it up to a dollar seventy-five in the first year, you moved on up to two, is what Terry said.
Well, I think I said two, I think we said split it up into two deals.
Yeah.
But we don't have a budget.
Well, I thought you said to hap- that you'd happen, to do so, the dollar seventy-five and then.
Two fifty.
Yeah, to two fifty.
Those stuff's up here.
But what I kind of wondered is, and I, I don't know, I'm not a landowner, so I don't know how they would feel about it, but I wondered if maybe a person shouldn't go on an annual cash rent basis. And then maybe just stay at the two dollars per yard and not consider going up further. But that would give them.
You mean renting the land and paying by the cubic yard?
Instead of doing a hundred dollar, uh, a year lease agreement, do away with that completely and pay them a cash rent based upon the number of acres that they're being taxed for. And then at some point in time, we'd have to determine whether or not, the, I, 'cause I don't think the ten acres is probably fair there. But I, I'm not, I mean, I come from a farm background, but I could tell you what an eighty looks like, I could tell you what a forty-five looks like, but I couldn't tell you what a ten acre plot of land looks like. I think they obvi- they actually need to go pocket.
Who is surveying the already taxed pits that are being used by Quartzsite that we're taxing them for?
I'm assuming they're doing the maps, just like.
Probably in aerial photos.
When they tear up property, they're going and taking every bit of the section though, too. You know, they're not hitting just a little pocket like we are, they.
Yeah, they're probably getting charged on the whole league.
Yeah, they're stripping the whole area, mining it, corning it, blasting it.
I'm just wondering, is that part of the contract that we're paying TRUIT for, or is that just up to our own department to configure?
I don't think, I don't think TRUIT's, he's strictly reappraisal.
You mean as to going and measuring?
Right, to, yeah, who, who has set, sets the initial assessment value of, based on size?
They could get a wheel, just like legged, the soil conservation, and TRUIT could just go out and wheel around it, do the calculation. It'd be the accurate, the most accurate. 'Cause the aerial view's kind of gray.
Well, and like Michael had said with Sandra's, that they, they call it reclaim.
We reclaim as we go, you know, we might have an area that's got some extra stockpile on it with some bigger rock or something.
No, you don't. You never closed my pit from fifteen or twenty.
You didn't want it closed.
No, I'm talking about the first one on the other side of the section. You guys never closed, you weren't here.
That was prior to.
Yeah, that's my.
The way that we, the way that we mine now, we are governed by the state, and we remine as we go, and we got a reclamation plan that we stick to. So that's a different story that I don't want to get into right now.
That was a requirement twenty years ago when I had that other pit, and I never closed it.
When you closed that last pit, Norman, you didn't want it reclaimed.
No, 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 I didn't say the last pit, did I? I said the one twenty years ago. You guys never closed it, I had to take my own equipment to close it. I pushed the dirt down myself and reclaimed it, you can go out there and see where.
Well, I guess.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, probably, you know, I, I agree with Dawn to some extent. I think that in order to be fair to the landowners, that we probably need to pay a rent on the land that is actively being commercial property, I guess it is. I guess, I'm not sure how we can do away with the lease because we need the lease to, say, we have this large area that we can mine. But when it comes down to taxing for commercial purposes, we have got to be able to figure out where that money is being generated from, and that's what should be taxed. And that's probably what we should be paying a rental fee on, I guess, you know, along with the gravel. Because once that gravel is removed, the value of that land is, is deteriorating, you know. Some of it can be re-farmed, there are areas that, that can be farmed, there are some of it that's totally, totally wasted, wasteful. So, um, I guess I would suggest that we think about this for a, a week. And I guess, Michael, I, I don't know whether there's anything you need to do, other than maybe you could, uh, maybe go out to lines and step off and see how much, or have, uh, maybe FSA would help you figure out how much of that land we're actually doing. So we kind of have an idea, and, and maybe that's not a good gravel pit, I don't care, pick an active one, wanna pick the one over by Barnard, that's fine, too. Uh, you know, I don't, you know, I, just looking at the one at Barnard, I would say eight acres maybe, I don't know. They're at Clark's, I, I don't know whether it's that large or not, but it's, it's, it's a.
I don't think it is, probably.
Yeah, but yeah, but I mean, that would be a, an idea, so we kind of have an idea where we're at.
It changes.
Yeah.
Through the year, if we're holding much gravel, we'll push down, then we'll uncover some more, so we keep increasing.
But.
We're covering up, reclaiming this area, but we're uncovering a bigger area.
And again, it, it all deals with that magic date of January one, I mean, that's, you know, we're, we're gonna have to kind of work with that date, too, you know, so.
To implement Dawn's idea, I think the rent could be based on the taxation, the dollar amount of the taxation of the year. That way, we know we're covering that, except that negates the whole premise that I said to you before to say that they got only a dollar a yard and weren't taxed, now they're getting two dollars a yard, if we're covering that tax amount, too.
I guess, I'm not sure we need to negate all the tax on that land because they, they are getting a, we're getting a product and we're giving the money. So I mean, the compensation shouldn't be total free taxation, 'cause, 'cause you are going to get some income from it, you know. So I, I guess I would, I would disagree with that.
But at our low rate, comparatively, if they found another source to sell to, there's no incentive to sell to us at the lower rate.
But if, if they'd have been taxing her for the last ten years, she'd pay, she'd have paid five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars in taxes, and we paid them a hundred and some thousand dollars for gravel.
I understand that, but we also only paid out a dollar a yard, whereas if someone like that, that landowner had found another place to sell, you know, it, right now, I don't think we have landowners actively seeking to sell outside the county, which they very well could altogether.
I am.
Well.
We don't have a lease, do you, Norman?
I know, but it's, it's the material that's in the county is going out of the town, and you're not taking any corporate action to keep it here. You're gonna have to.
Well, that's what we're discussing, I think.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to, 'cause Smeen County wants to buy mine.
Okay, I think.
We don't have a lease on yours, Norman.
You said that twice now.
We've exhausted this subject, I think, for today. Do you have something else, Michael, on this?
I don't.
Okay. Um, Sandra, again, I want to thank you for bringing that to the attention of the commission and, and of the county. Think it was something that I was not aware of. Uh, I guess, uh, this was a very nice, uh, meeting compared to the one we had on the footprint of the, uh, wind towers, as I remember. Uh, it was not a pleasant day, let me clue you in.
Aye.
But thank you for, thank you for being congenial to it, thank you. All right, I guess we're done with you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, you have a great meeting.
Yep. Okay, I believe we're at, oh gee, I believe it's after twelve o'clock. Um, Alexis, I guess, did you have something you wanted to discuss with us today?
I have nothing today.
Okay, um, Dawn, do you have anything else for us?
Um, the only thing that I have, well, I have two things, um, Deborah brought these back down.
Oh, okay.
But in Randam's original contract, Jennifer had modified, um, that's those for them. They had, she'd modified the dates and stuff so that we can get Randam's contract extended. But in the back of it, originally in the proposal, there was that, um, well, actually, never mind, 'cause that's Randy's. Never mind, I thought that was a decision for you. That was where he was going to put in where he would propose to extend the contract past the five years if you guys wanted to, but that's in his proposal, so.
Okay.
Never mind that. Um, the other thing that I had was, um, Lisa Feldcamp had called, and, you know, she had assisted the two fire, first real fire in the city of Lincoln. By getting a grant for air packs. Um, when they were down checking in equipment or doing something, um, Jeremiah Zacco had visited with her about helping her apply for grant funds to get, um, equipment for the rescue squad. And she said she's willing to help, there's a Post Rock Community Foundation grant, and also, she's willing to go to the Dane Hansen Foundation if they're not successful with the Post Rock Community Foundation. But for her, when they did the city of Lincoln, she was a city representative, she's not really a county representative. So she wanted to let you know that she is willing to help with that if you guys would let her. Um, but she will need your authorization in order to do so. And so I told her I would mention it to you guys, um, the grant application deadline is until March. So for the Post Rock Community Foundation, and I think they were gonna need to try to do that one first, and then they would go to the Dane Hansen Foundation after that, so. You can think about that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll think about it for a week, and then we'll, if you remind me next week.
Okay.
Uh, anything else to come before this board?
I would like to suggest that we open up to public comment.
When you start measuring these gravel pits, you're gonna have to consider the access road in and out, because now.
That's true.
If you lease it, now it's commercial. You better put a stipulation in there that if you lease it as a commercial road, or you control of it, is the landowner gonna be able to cross over that road? That's, that's a problem up here in these wind towers. And this landowner, he says, when that kind of year leases up, he says, you're out of here. They wouldn't let him cross that access road, he had to go turn up here, come around the other end of farm on the other side of the road, so, cross your teeth and dot your i's and all that.
It's not a pleasant society anymore. Anyone else, now this meeting stands adjourned until ten o'clock Monday morning.